Okay. Believe we're live streaming.
Yeah, live on YouTube. I've got it here now, yeah.
Okay.
So. It is five o'clock Wednesday evening and we can begin our special meeting for the planning commission for Cook County. Before we delve into the business, I am going to read this brief. Oops.
Uh oh.
I froze.
Mr. Chair.
Emergency declaration made by Governor Walz in accordance with Minnesota's statutes, chapter 20, chapter 12. We have ensured that all members of the body participating in the meeting, wherever their physical location can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony offered at today's meeting. We have also ensured that members of the public present at the regular meeting location, the body can hear at all discussion and testimony and all votes of the members of the body. We have urged the public not to attend this meeting in person because of the COVID-19 pandemic and have ensured that members of the public can view and monitor the remotely in real time by broadcasting the meeting on the Cook County website. All votes will be conducted by roll call so that each member's vote on each issue will be identified and recorded. With that, we'll begin our business. Our agenda, we don't show a well, we don't have any minutes to adopt and we have the agenda before us. It is all on ordinances. So I guess we just move ahead with this agenda, folks. And with that, the first item of my business is the proposed vacation rental ordinance amendments and a proposed sign ordinance amendments. Turn that over to Tim.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And as we discussed earlier, what we will do is I do have a PowerPoint. I'm going to share my screen. And then what we can do is work through each one of the ordinances at a time. And though the first agenda item includes both the vacation rental and the sign ordinance, we will just do the vacation rental ordinance and we'll stop and can vote and discuss on that one and then move on. So let me, let me get my my high-speed PowerPoint presentations here. Okay, can everybody see my?
Yes. Yep, it's up.
Perfect. Okay, so here we go. We'll just go ahead and start. This is the the one change. There is only one change to the vacation rental ordinance at this point in time, and it's dealing with the license fees. It is actually striking the provision that allowed for a prorating of the fee over the course of the first year of operation for an operation of vacation rental. We have found it to be logistically difficult to track and have really found it unnecessary to be able to maintain. The cost is only $200. So to make things much more simplistic, easy to administer and provide less of an incentive for for people to kind of mask that they're even conducting an operation to try to get a prorating thing. The proposal is just to go ahead and eliminate that language that would provide for a prorating.
Very good. Questions or discussion?
I like it.
Yeah, it makes, it just makes perfect sense. If we don't have any, if folks are in agreement with that, we can deal with this ordinance. We had a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair, to approve.
Second.
Language.
That was moved by Commissioner Henneker.
Yeah.
Second. And second by?
John Sloane.
John, I can't, John, I can't see right with this up on the screen. Okay, second by John. Further discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Even though we don't have folks at this point logged in.
Oh, we, yeah.
Not be a bad idea to call for any public comment.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, so we will stop for a moment and ask for any public comment on the the vacation rental ordinance revision that we're planning to forward to the county board. This is the opportunity for the public to make a comment on vacation rental ordinance changes. Anyone wishing to do that? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing and go back to the discussion we were having, which we kind of had. Commissioner Henneker has moved for the seconded. Further discussion. Hearing none. We'll call the roll. Commissioner Trefoil is absent. All right, Commissioner Henneker.
Aye.
Commissioner Machenbacher.
Aye.
I myself. Commissioner LaBorda.
Aye.
Commissioner Schlot.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Very good. Move on to the sign ordinance. Mr. Nelson.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Going forward, these these particular changes, and this is going to take over these, this slide and the next slide. These were actually requested by the county attorney's office. There was some 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 consternation and some discussion about campaign signs and how they would relate to our sign ordinance and and when would people be able to put them up and take them down. There is a state statute that actually governs this. And our county attorney wanted to make sure that we actually, our sign ordinance regulates commercial speech and not and not really deal with it in terms of campaign signs or non-campaign signs. The two signs we're dealing with are commercial signs or non-commercial signs, and we do not we do not regulate content. So basically, this is just kind of clarifying the fact that it is non-commercial speech that we're not regulating. And then this next one here goes to the, it points to and references the state statute, which actually provides that timeline for people in there and when they can put campaign signs up and when they have to take them down. So we're basically just deferring to the state for campaign signs, and we're saying we do not regulate non-commercial signs. And that's basically all of the changes for the sign ordinance.
Very good. And with that, then we'll turn to the public again. If anyone has from the public tonight has a would like to comment on the changes to the proposed sign ordinance for Cook County, now is your opportunity. Anyone from the public with comment? Hearing none. We'll close the public portion of the hearing then and turn to commissioners. Any comments or questions from commissioners?
Em, I'm just curious, how many signs are allowed on a property under this change? Do you have any idea?
Are, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Sloane, are you talking about like campaign signs or are you talking about?
Yeah. Non-commercial signs.
Okay, non-commercial signs from a county standpoint, we don't have a limitation on that. It would be deferred to the state. And yes, I know it's it's a bit of an issue because some some places have a lot, but it comes into in some counties. I know St. Louis County has had some real issues in terms of people really inundating their property with commercial speed signs put up with messages and such like that. But they're they're really, from a county standpoint, there is no, we don't have a particular criteria for non-commercial signs.
We had that happen up the trail.
Yeah. If this at least, I'm familiar with this ordinance from.
Oh, he froze up.
Oh, boy.
Signs that are, come back with a pickup load of signs. But people, you know, most people are respectful. So other comments or questions about sign ordinance?
Is the, is the Minnesota statute? Have any verbiage in it about how long the signs can remain up? In terms of timeframe, timeline? It's just that 10 days?
Yes, yeah, that is the statutory language in that 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 there is pointing to specifically the campaign portion of.
Right.
So yeah, that that's the state statute, and that actually came to be some of the discussion with this because we did have a special election because of our commissioner district, number one, having to to get that special election just a couple of months ago. And so, yeah, that kind of that in part is what forced some of this discussion and some of these changes to be made.
Okay. And is there language that says who's responsible for the removal in the Minnesota statute?
It is, it is the property owner's responsibility.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? If not, does someone want to make a motion?
I move for approval for the sign ordinance amendment, section 5.1.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by John Sloane and the second by Commissioner Henneker. Further discussion. Okay, hearing none. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Henneker.
Aye.
Commissioner Machenbacher.
Aye.
I myself. Commissioner LaBorda.
Aye.
Commissioner Schlot.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Very good. We're, the first part of our agenda done. Moving on then to item B. Proposed wind energy conversion system ordinances. Mr. Nelson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just a little side note. When when you start to speak, Mr. Chair, sometimes you're cutting in and out. So sometimes it's it's difficult to get everything that that you're saying. It's happened now, but so far we've been able to kind of get the message.
Maybe my computer is screening me. I'll try better. I'll try better. Can I, I don't know if I can do that either.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, the WEX provisions, this is an interesting move for us because this is actually proposed language is nearly identical to the to the wind energy conversion systems provision that had been in place already within the tower ordinance that had existed from 2001 through 2018. In 2018, by request of our IS department, MIS department, we separated out the wireless telecommunications provisions out of the tower and it's to be its own standalone ordinance with the intent that we were just going to have also a wind energy ordinance as well. And we just hadn't, we hadn't gotten to that. This is, this is now the point from 2018 until now, we just did not have those provisions. And then now we are putting them back into place. So by and large, these are all the same provisions with a couple of exceptions. The most major change is levels of permits. Of the the previous WEX provisions allowed for a tower to go up to 90 feet. And here we we have levels that say up to 35 feet with a land use permit and between 35 feet with a maximum of 199 feet with with as its conditional use permit without a variance. And then if it was over 199 feet, it would have to be a variance. There's a couple of other little minor changes, just clarifications that these are systems that are intended to be integrated in with the electrical grid system as well and such. But that basically, that's basically what we're looking at. And there had been some other discussion in terms of separating out the different types of zone districts. But instead of really separating out with the zone districts, the decision was made internally to say, let's just say everything up to 35 feet is is okay with the land use permit. Everything above that requires a conditional use permit up to 189 feet. And then 199 feet, you wouldn't require a variance. And that, I'll just turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, for any questions.
The Tim, the 35 feet is the current limit for the structure, any structure of a home, is it not?
That is correct, Mr. Chair. That's what we kind of went with that 35 feet. Yeah.
So you could put something up, $98 in your house.
Yeah, also. I would just say that one of the commissioner, Commissioner Machenbacher had contacted me earlier to make sure since it had been a long time since these provisions were in place that we originally put them in place to send them over to Arrowhead Electric and make sure if they had any kind of comments, I did send them to and I've heard nothing back.
Yeah, yeah. Very good. Okay. With that, we can open up to public comment. Anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the wind energy conversion systems ordinance, Cook County, now is your opportunity. Anyone to comment on the wind energy conservation system ordinance in Cook County? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing then and turn to commissioners for any questions or comments that you might have.
Em, is the, is the maximum limit absolutely 199 feet?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Anderson, that that height limitation is more so from the FAA, above which you require lighting. And so that's why that that is is set as a height maximum. And like any other provision within the ordinance, if there is some commercial system that wants to be taller than that, they can actually apply for a variance and then it can be reviewed through the public hearing process. And if it's, if it's deemed to be compatible with the surrounding area, then it would be able to be approved.
Are there towers in Cook County that exceed 199 feet?
Wind towers, no.
Just all radio tight towers that we have that are taller.
That is.
Yeah. Frankly, I mean, I looked at wind on my own property. If you look at the winds along the North Shore, there's, there's the possibility to gain a little wind energy right on the shore itself. But boy, once you go inland off the shore, there's it really doesn't work very well for us. Other comments or questions? Or motions?
I would motion to approve the language as written.
Okay, motion is by Commissioner LaBorda to approve the as written. And somebody else is, second is, who was I hearing there, Judy?
Yes.
Judy, all right. Judy is the second. Further discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Henneker.
Aye.
Commissioner Machenbacher.
Aye.
I'll be I myself. Commissioner LaBorda.
Aye.
Commissioner Schlot.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Very good. Wind energy is now passed as well. And we're moving on to a bigger chunk of the night, proposed zone, I didn't see as a proposed zoning ordinance amendments. And I'll just turn that back to you, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, thanks again, Mr. Chair. And yeah, I'll be going through these slow. Like I, like I said, you all have the documents, all of the changes were were placed into public notice in the newspaper. So the PowerPoint slides that I have are not going to reflect all of the changes, all of the minor ones that are just simply suggesting, you know, changing the the term from planning and zoning office to land services. Not going to really cover those, but I will be covering those that are substantial in in nature. And then if you have any questions on any of the other on other changes, minor ones that I don't cover, we can certainly discuss those. So let me go ahead and begin with article five. Article five, section 5.03, we added a provision in there dealing with fences. And then this came up as a concern because at this point in time, our ordinance does not regulate fences. You can put a fence up on your property line without any kind of land use permit or anything. We've never really had any issue with it. Now, not in the, not in the too far distant past, we had a an approval of a conditional use permit or interim use permit where we started getting some we started getting some feedback that neighbors were going to go ahead and build like a 10 to 20 foot privacy fence because they didn't want to see that use in their yard or in their neighbors and such like that. So we decided, okay, at this point, let's at least put this in there, talk about not necessarily the interior, but in the shore impact zone. So basically, this is all added and it just says fences may be placed on a property up to the side yards, that back line, but must be, or side yard but must be limited to four feet in height if located in the shore or bluff impact zones. And so it still allows for fences to be put up. It's still not regulated by land use permit. They can still be on the property line, but once you get to the shore or bluff impact zone, we just felt that it shouldn't be a 10, 20 foot privacy fence in all particular areas. So that's the first provision.
Yeah.
Section 5.04 is the next one. And this really is a minor one. This just, this just changes the dwelling or building to dwelling. It just strikes out the building, principal building and has principal dwelling instead. And in a residential zone district, this goes right along with Minnesota DNR shoreline rules that basically says you can have a principal dwelling and one guest cabin that's allowed. And a residential bunkhouse may also be permitted. And we, we have all those already defined in our ordinances as to what that is.
Hey, Tim, can we go back to 5.03 just briefly, quick?
Sure.
Does this pertain to any type of fence? Would be limited to four feet in bluff impact? What I'm thinking about, just as a quick example, I can think of property on the Chicago Bay Road that the landowner had put a chain link fence all the way around their property to keep the deer out and and it was hired in four feet. That that would restrict that? Is that correct?
It would restrict it only if located in the shore or bluff impact zone.
So chain link would be included, even if it's transparent or see-through, it's included in that.
Well, it says fencing. In that example that you provide, can you say that it's in the shore or bluff impact zone?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the, it's within the thousand feet of Lake Superior. It's on Chicago Bay Road.
Okay, but that's, that's shoreline. The shore impact zone is half of the setback distance so Lake Superior would have to be within 20 feet of the vegetation.
Okay.
Essentially, is this then what stops someone from building a tall fence both lock lines or something and closing some guy down along the lake?
And yeah, it's, it's right along the lake. It's, it's, we're talking half of the setback distance from the water.
Yeah, I'm typically not one for more restrictions, I think. Probably transparent on that. But like in this case, I think maybe it would have been a good thing to extend that. In that particular cases, there you know, to be able to extend that regulation, you know, all the way back to like the Chicago Bay Road from the shoreline. But I mean, I don't want to delve too far.
I understand, Charlie.
Right, Mr. Chair, we're going from, from zero regulations on this to, it's kind of a baby step to see.
Understood.
We don't, there's not a lot of fencing going on and this is minimal impact. It's right in dealing only within the shore impact zone. So we felt that it would be a modest and minor step.
Very good.
So if the fence is already there, it's grandfathered?
Yeah, that would be, that would fall in the legal non-conformity circumstance where if something exists prior to the adoption of any ordinance change and it was legal at the time that it was put in place, then it would be able to remain in its place. We would, we do not have the ability to amortize that out.
Other questions or comments? Nothing? Okay.
One more question. So if a person wants to build a fence, do they have to come to land services and have a discussion about the height and get a permit?
No.
Or as long as they stay under four feet?
That is, that is correct. As long as they're under four feet inside of that shore of bluff impact zone, then it's fine. And outside of that, there aren't any requirements. So yeah, they would not have to come in to talk to us. There's certainly, everybody's welcome to come in and talk to us to make sure everybody's on the, on the same page. But yeah, this is just, it's advisory in nature.
You're good. Okay.
Okay, then section 5.8 is really a, it's a, it's a clarification of what it is that's already being done. We're just putting it in. We, this is a building measurement. Using the exterior walls of the building.
You have the email in, so if you go live into the Zoom meeting?
Somebody's got a mic. Somebody could maybe mute their computer. We're hearing you in the middle of the meeting here, folks. Thank you. Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, so the the provision states that the the building measurement and what we're talking about is the, you know, kind of the square footage of the measurements. And there's always been a little bit of discussion in terms of, well, what do you use to be able to determine what the square footage is? And the square footage really isn't important other than for getting a land use permit and the cost of the fees that are associated with that and such. And so it's a, this is basically just stating what we already do by policy and that we've been doing for quite some time. And in that second sentence, it's all openly and supported by posts or diagonal brace are included in the square footage. Because you're kind of talking about impervious surface where you have roof coverage over something that sheds the water or directs the water to a particular area. And then that last sentence, measurement of the square footage of floors above the first floor, utilize the Cook County assessor's procedure. So that's that way because there's angled roofs and sometimes, you know, it's not just a square dimension thing. They actually take some square footage off based off of the usable height of that roof space that's in there. So that's, that's just basically a clarification of something that we already utilize. Section 5.9, this basically sets, and again, this is something that we already do that setbacks the structures or measured from the overhang, the drip line of the building or the nearest portion of the structure, including the decks or porches. And this is just, again, clarifying or putting it out there as to something we already do. And as a matter of fact, whenever we grant variances, typically part of the conditions state that it's, you know, that at no part of the building or drip line shall be closer than a certain distance on them. So this is just again, a clarification of something that is already been used for many years now. And then section 5.10, which is an addition, again, is another addition of something that we already do and identify that the three-dimensional envelope of a building shall be determined by the exterior walls, roof of the structure, including decks and porches and changes to the three-dimensional envelope require a land use permit that would be issued by land services. And that that basically goes and that's a general provision. These are all in general provisions. And that that goes to one of the questions that you had asked to Judy, not necessarily this meeting, but a previous one about changes to a three-dimensional, what is, what does that mean, three-dimensional changes in there? And that is basically if you're in a non-conforming structure and you expand outward in the walls, but also if you expand upward, you're going to require a land use permit and or a variance depending on the location or its situation within the setback distances. So there's that. Now, section 5.12, this is interesting because it looks like a very large change when you go through that document that's in there, but it really is just a, a total cut and paste from the shoreline provision. So article five are the general provisions. Article seven are the shoreline management provisions. And basically, these grading and filling erosion control standards are standards that we regulate countywide. Some counties only do shoreline zoning, but we do zoning countywide. And so for the longest time, these provisions have been in the shoreline area, but they've been regulated. We regulate countywide. So we wanted to just kind of take and move them out of just the shoreline area and put them into the general provisions portion of it. And there aren't any changes that are made to those provisions. Like I said, it's just a cut and paste. So it looks like a lot of addition into what would now be the new section 5.12. But it's not really much of a change other than just relocating it in its location within the ordinance.
So just a quick clarification, Tim. So just to I mean, I don't mean this in a negative way or anything, but if I'm understanding this right, then previously outside of shoreline, these provisions weren't actually required by ordinance?
No, that's, that's actually not true because if you, if you look at the way that the phraseology is, it says for grading and filling permits within certain distances of the shoreline or this and that, it requires this kind of permit. And if you're further away than a certain distance away from the shoreline, which is basically everywhere else in the county, it is this. So yes, it technically and legally was enforceable out into the rest of the county. It just didn't make sense to have it in the shoreline area. Okay. Yep.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, oh. Joseph Ruth has raised his hand. Joseph Ruth has raised his hand. Go ahead, Joseph.
Chair, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, uh, there is one other thing that's come in since two thousand and six. We have a stormwater ordinance that does regulate the entire county uh for grading and filling operations and soil disturbance. So that also is a factor here. And we have incorporated that language into these changes. So we ne- mentioned not only the grade and fill permit that existed at the time that the uh uh zoning ordinance was uh was passed, but we also incorporated in the language from uh the uh stormwater ordinance.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ruth. Uh, that 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 was a good clarification. Not only are we remove or relocating it from the shoreline section, but we're also becoming uh more consistent with the existing uh stormwater ordinance that that we had adopted uh many years ago as well.
So I do have one, I do have one question. I I'm just looking in uh on item two there, grading and filling excavations. We, it it's basically states you don't need a permit to build a home, but as I look at the last sentence, movement of more than one hundred cubic yards of material requires a stormwater permit. So if I would, if I'm gonna build a a home anywhere and I move more than one hundred and fifty dollars of excavation for my house, I need a stormwater permit? Is that correct?
You go ahead and answer that one, Joel.
Mr. Chair, um, the answer to that question is if it's simply excavation for the construction of the house, we do not have a limit on the number of cubic yards that can be moved. What we're trying to cover, because the language, if you read through this, the language covers not only the house construction, but the driveway. And we've run into situations where people were putting in a quarter of a mile long driveway and said, well, I should be able to have that covered under my land use permit. So that's the principal reason we put the the hundred cubic yards in there, which is uh a metric used by the small site stormwater permit. Anything over a hundred cubic yards, we need a small site stormwater permit. So that's basically why that was put in there.
Very good. I understand that. Because you know, it it if I'm gonna build a a even a modest home, uh the the crawl space excavation is gonna be probably a hundred and fifty yards. Uh, but yeah, it but you're not, you're, I I understand exactly what you're saying, though. It's the, my driveway is three eighths of a mile long. There's a lot more dirt there than there was moved to my house, that's for sure. So I appreciate that. That's fine with me.
Can we, can I just get one more clarification on that same section, Joseph? Uh, am I reading, I must the uh septic system of over a hundred yards will need a septic permit and a small site stormwater permit?
Specifically, uh, any kind of uh work for a septic system is exempt from both the the grade and fill and the stormwater ordinance.
And that's because they're already covered under the septic order in the design.
Okay, I, yeah, I missed a sentence there. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and and move on. And and once I get to the end of the changes in section five, we'll have the opportunity to talk about any of these section five provisions uh again as well. So section uh five point one eight, the new one, is really basically just uh informational in referencing all of the other ordinances. Uh, sometimes we have people that aren't aware of the different ordinances that are all uh in place, uh governing land use and and uh all of the different issues that might be out there, e- even our our newest one, the the buffer ordinance um and its impacts. And so we just listed that uh in a in a provision in itself. Um, and then you look at five point one nine, five point twenty two zero and two one are again, all uh basically transitions from uh Article seven, from the shoreline into general provisions. And basically, more so than than what it does is it removes, we're removing actual provisions, because when when the zoning ordinance was originally created, we did not have a septic ordinance. We did not have um uh even a subdivision ordinance. We had an interim subdivision ordinance. So we had specific uh provisions in there relating to septic treatments and other things. And now that we have individual uh sewage treatment ordinances and subdivision ordinances, we basically said, let's just refer to those instead of having in independent standards in each one of the different ordinances. So all of our ordinances, all we want to do, if they refer to septic systems, all they're gonna do is refer to the septic system ordinance. So there's only one set of standards. And the same thing with subdivisions, the same thing with buffers, the same thing with everything. So basically, it's just removing those uh provisions out of um Article seven and then uh making sure they just reference the other existing ordinances as opposed to being uh standard in of themselves. And that's, that's it for the section or Article five changes. Um, and we can stop there and have any other discussion for Article five, and then we can proceed on to Article seven.
You're good. Thoughts, comments, or questions for Tim on Article five? I think we're up to Article seven, Tim.
Okay, Article seven. And I I I somehow feel we're gonna have more discussion in Article seven than Article five. Uh, but here we'll, we'll get going. So, uh, lots or our article uh or section seven point zero five, lot sizes and setbacks. And really what this is, is there's a table uh in the ordinance, and there's a reference under general development lake for Lake Superior. And this is a clarification, because there there's, you know, numbers written there, a little double asterisk and stuff like that. And really, what this is, is a clarification that structures are able to be at forty feet from the vegetation line on Lake Superior. That's, that's always the way that it's been. Soil absorption areas for septics must be the hundred feet away. So this is just basically saying um that, okay, you can put structures at forty feet. That's the standard setback distance from Lake Superior. But as far as uh water quality and protecting uh the water of the lake, the setback for septic is a hundred feet for for the general, as a general development. So that's just the clarification. Okay, sep- uh section seven point oh eight uh B uh one topographic alterations that goes right in line with what I had said for uh Article five. This is all that uh deleted in uh language that's pulled out of that section was pulled out and put verbatim back into uh Article five under the general provisions. So, I've already addressed that. And section seven point one four, bluff area standards. Um, this is uh the first one there, the first uh comment or reference in seven point one four. Uh, it's just some discussion for the top of the bluff uh area and um this is one where uh it it coincidentally enough, the DNR uh had submitted to us, to our office, and we've done a a pretty thorough review and sent back comments. But the DNR has been working on uh a a document to be able to hand out for uh counties and jurisdictions and and everyone else in terms of how to determine uh the top of the bluff, how the state of Minnesota wants you to determine what the top of the bluff is. And so uh that is in the works. It's a ten-page document. It's pretty thorough. I, we've got it. If Joseph wants to make any comments on that, he can. But basically, what we're doing here in this change, in this first change in seven point one four, is just leaving the definition of the top of, top of bluff to Article two, instead of defining it under, under different uh sections and articles. And we're probably going to be revisiting this again when the DNR comes out formally with that, with that document. Now, this next change here, and I know, Mr. Chair, that we we uh most likely do have a member of the public that is going to want to uh comment on this particular area, and that is in dealing with the shallow soils and exposed bedrock provisions. Uh, the proposal is to go ahead and eliminate, at this point, uh both the subparts B and C uh for shallow soils and exposed bedrocks. Since there really are a a local deviations from the Minnesota State Shoreland Management Rules, um, they are lesser restrictive and they have insufficient criteria and protocols in there for making the determinations. Um, they could, however, be reintroduced uh if we do have the appropriate uh protocols and criteria established and developed. And this is coming uh off of the recommendation of our uh Minnesota County's Insurance Trust Attorney uh who's who's worked with us and and looked at at the case. You know, clearly, we've we've had some recent discussions regarding these provisions and um everybody had agreed that the language is is simply not adequate. Um, and uh and it and it, we are unique as a county in having that in there. I mean, we're unique as a county of having the bluff and bedrock features that we do. So it's not uh completely out of the question that there would be these provisions in there, but um, it was uh certainly uh the legal advice of our council to eliminate those provisions, at least until the point where we do have uh and would have uh clear uh and enforceable uh criteria and protocols for making those determinations. Otherwise, we are kind of giving a blanket variance and making it uh more difficult for ourselves to defend those provisions uh from a local jurisdiction standpoint. And I'm just gonna go ahead and stop now, because I know uh that there uh is some, some member of the public that wants to make some comments. And you should have received uh already an email uh of of those comments uh from this individual.
Very good. Uh, so then I will do that. I'll open this uh the hearing up to the public to make any comments that they uh would like regarding the changing of zoning ordinance amendments. Uh, specifically, we're on the bluff area standards, but any any comments regarding the zoden zoning ordinance amendments. Now would be your opportunity.
Yeah, hi, Brad Silman. Uh, I did wanna come in and talk to you specifically.
Mr. Silman, will you give me your name and address, just for the record, please?
Sure, Brad Silman. Uh, my home address is one nine eight six one hundred and twelfth Circle Northeast, Blaine, Minnesota, five five four four nine. Property in discussion was at nine seventy Caribou Trail. The um, so the as noted, um, when Mr. Nelson was speaking, that there's some there's a lot of bedrock in the county. And uh and we have a very challenging piece of property with a with a prominent hill that falls in within the Minnesota definition of a bluff. And um uh, it was the shallow soils law that, this ordinance that enabled us to be able to build. And um, when I, uh, Mr. Nelson's been very open in terms of his discussion about this with us, and so um we've had a good number of exchanges on the subject uh uh and it's been very helpful. You know, I understand the desire to put in more provisions and restrictions, so there are still restrictions, but criteria so that the success of the, the uh, the shallow soils exception can be properly managed. Um, my concern with striking the law in total is that uh, you know, this was not brought to my attention as a, as a, as an option by anyone that was sitting down and reading the law from cover to cover and making sure that I uh you know, I found it and understood everything and realized that we had that shallow soil because our builder had said that um hill you've got right there, um, there's something, there's a reason for it. And when we dug down, we found the rock at at about eleven inches, eighteen inches. And that's what the engineer report validated. Um, the concern is just that for my fellow neighbors in the county, you know, with dealing with the bedrock and the bluff conditions that exist so prominently in the county, that um just complete removal of this from the consideration. They're not gonna be aware that they have those options. So if if we're gonna reintroduce, then I would look to see, you know, ask if there's some sort of timetable when they come back with some more specified criteria. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to comment on the zoning ordinance amendments? Now is your opportunity. We're specifically dealing with the bluff area standards. Hearing anyone else will close this portion of the hearing then. And uh, Tim, you wanna move on?
Okay, yes, I can. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just a quick answer to the question in terms of the timeline for coming back, would not be able to provide that at this point in time, because uh there are a lot of changes that we do have to make through the rest of our ordinances. And in order to start something like that, um, it it would have to take some time to do. So we we would not be in a position to be able to anticipate uh when that would come in. But as with anything, anybody would have, and this is how we had managed it uh and how pretty much every other county manages it uh across the state by virtue of a variance and dealing with it site-specific or proper property-specific uh area. Okay. So, uh, in moving on uh to the next one, uh the seven point one four old, okay, D, which is now the new B, uh basically eliminates confusion, including additions uh within the bluff to make sure that they just require a variance, uh except for the deck additions, which are referred to in nine point zero two, which is the nonconformity section. So it's basically taking out, if you look at that language, it's a lot of, well, if you have this kind of square footage, or if you do this, or if you do that, uh, it just eliminates that and says, okay, if you're gonna be adding to a structure uh that is within a bluff area, um, you do need to get a variance for it, which again, makes it consistent with the state shoreline management rules. Um, seven point one six is in addition for at putting in boardwalks and wetlands. What uh boardwalks are actually a preferred method uh for traversing through wetlands as opposed to dumping in a bunch of fill and cutting off wetlands into different uh areas. And so uh, we went ahead and and putting, put in uh the provisions that were, would simply allow for uh boardwalks within, within the wetlands uh areas. Yes.
Not to interrupt, I'm, so if there's a better time, I can wait. I did want to just a, just a brief question and might be too convoluted, but um, I I think I agree with with eliminating the shallow soil standard language here. But could there be a a note uh put in there like with asterisks or something referencing the uh, I think you said it was a DNR study that was going, some, something that could say shallow standards may apply based on this study or whatever's. Is there a way to put a note in there? Take all this out, but just put something that would, would to to the uh concern by the the Silmans, um, which in principle, I agree with to to just have something there to to trigger that there might be another standard and another way to um, approach it. Is that too convoluted?
Uh, not really. The the current DNR study that's going on right now, or the development of their bluff uh document, is not really dealing in shallow soils. Nobody else is. Um, that's, that's pretty much unique to us. So if we were going to, as a planning commission, provide a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, what you would do is basically say, okay, we we recommend approval of deleting this language. However, in this particular circumstance, we would recommend that this issue be revisited uh within one-year timeline uh to determine whether new provisions could be introduced relating to shallow soils or something like that. That's, that's the way that you could uh benchmark that in uh to the process. And again, this is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, I mean, I don't know if now's the time to have that discussion or or later on in our, in our night here, but if anyone else would, would be interested in just putting that note in there or revisiting it later.
Talk to comments from anybody, yeah. Let me, let me just, can I ask the question, Kim? I'm I'm thinking of what, what we've just talked about in the Silman situation. Uh, in the case of eliminating this bluff, um, allowance for building in shallow soils on the bluff, following, doing what we're, what's being proposed here tonight. You, anyone such, the the hearing we had last month or whenever it was with the Silmans was that it was, we were not considering this. This, they didn't need a a hearing from us. They could, they could build under this ordinance. If we uh, if we make these changes, we would be right where they were to begin with. They would be coming in for a conditional use permit to build or a variance, I guess I would say, from the variance, isn't it, from the bluff line setback? You could still build in some of these places, but you may, it comes down to working with staff and coming up with a allowable solution. Is that, am I correct in my assumption there?
Uh, you're correct, Mr. Chair. And I think, I think that was one of the the issues that uh was a little bit of contention in with that Silman when it came uh in front of the variance, because we had just heard uh a previous variance under a very similar circumstance where there was a lot more work that had been done by the property owners with an engineering where there was a lot more work that had been done by the property owners with an engineering firm. And there was a lot more information that was provided to the Board of Adjustment that made the decision much more even to to make. And so when a variance does come before the board, and so the answer is yes, you would be able to come to the Board of Adjustment with the variance. And so the Board of Adjustment, by even state statute, has the ability to request additional information until it feels comfortable in making that determination. And so, yeah, in staff, it's our, I don't want to say obligation, but it's our duty to kind of work with the property owners to make sure that if we know what kind of information the Board of Adjustment likes to have or wants to have in order to make those decisions, that's what we kind of try to bridge between the applicant and the Board of Adjustment.
Very good. My point just was, we're not making anything unbuildable here. We're saying, you know, we got to take another look in a different direction. That's all. Okay, I'm fine. Judy, did you have a question?
Tim, what what guidance then does the the Board of Adjustment use to, you know, address the issue that Don just brought up? Is it the, is there a current guidance from D N R or from Minnesota statute? Or where are we with that?
Okay, well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Anderson, the the answer is what the what the state standards say is you do not build in a bluff impact zone period. That's that's what the standard is as far as the state is concerned. So it is up to the applicant's responsibility to demonstrate how they can safely build in an appropriate manner in in deviation from those standards to the satisfaction of the Board of Adjustment. The Board, we don't really have guidance, as as was mentioned by myself and supported by by Mr. Silman. We are a unique county. We do have a bedrock features. We do have all these features around. So really, the intention of a variance process is that each property is looked and each request is looked in and of itself and how it relates to the specific property in question. And in contrast to the, as I was mentioning, the one variance application or process that had gone through prior to the Silmans, they they really kind of front and loaded a lot of information that went to the Board of Adjustment that really made the Board of Adjustment members feel very comfortable in making the decision that they did. And so it's it's one of those things, how much information is enough information? Well, in that one particular case, it was almost, yeah, I don't want to say too much information, but there was a lot of information and they covered a lot of ground. So then when something comes up and it's and then the Board of Adjustment members themselves are are kind of left with, do we want more of it? Does this really answer that question? They have the ability to request for additional information at that point. And so.
So so the engineering reports and hydrology reports, et cetera, that that an applicant would provide would be the guidance that the Board of Adjustment would go by?
To the extent that it was comfortable with that, yeah. And and that's, you know, there's, there is a reason why through the Minnesota Counties and Current Trust, we know that land use issues are the most litigated and highest cost in terms of risk to the counties because of these determinations that are made by citizen boards and such in terms of that that cross between property rights and protection of the environment, protection of neighboring properties and such like that. So there's always that contention that's in place. But yeah, it's it's to the satisfaction of the board and the testimony that's provided and the amount of credibility and reliability that the Board of Adjustment members places on whatever engineer study and presentation that that is made before it to make their decision.
Understood. That's what that answers my question.
And I I have a question. Is, am I correct in this new change is eliminating if it's eliminating the soft soil provision, which allows building in a bluff zone? Is that correct?
It's it's the shallow soils provisions. There's both exposed bedrock and shallow soil provisions. That is, like I said, it's a deviation from the Minnesota State Shoreland Rules. And currently, the the, to use the the case and because they're monitoring and they're here and participating in the meeting, to use the Silman's case, we, because we don't have any specific criteria listed, as long as we had a a report that was submitted by the engineer firm that they retained and that our county engineer, we have somebody to evaluate it and say, does it meet your minimal requirements, what you think would be adequate in determining the shallow soils, then we pretty much had to go with that. Whereas this change takes it and puts it in the hands of the Board of Commissioner or the the Board of Adjustment to say, okay, yes, we're not considering only just that, but also the impact on the water body itself, on the neighboring property. One of the characteristics that and criteria that the Board of Adjustment uses in granting of variances is the request in character with the rest of the locality of the area. So it's not just a specific scientific analysis. It is a scientific analysis couched in as well with a sociologic and and kind of character of the neighborhood type of approach. Probably over answered your question.
So is the concern about the stability of the bluff? Or is it the concern about the visual impact?
Yes.
Both?
The 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 Board of Adjustment and the county has to take into consideration all of those particular aspects, yes, stability of the bluff. We have had projects that contractors have sworn, yes, we're going to be able to do this and nothing's going to happen. And then within two years, slump happens and all the nutrient loads from all the materials goes into the water body. So we do have those those episodes. So it is a legitimate concern for the governance body, especially when the state of Minnesota says, just flat, plain and simple, no, you can't do it. So we're granted as a local unit of government this ability to deviate or vary from those standards. And what this would be doing today is instead of taking away, we instead of allowing a a blanket deviation from it without consideration of all of these other aspects of it, it would just be putting it back into the Board of Adjustment hands, who is responsible for evaluating all of the slump to the lake and the aesthetic value and the character of the locality.
So if if the Board of Adjustment is determining that the the foundation is solid, there has to be some demonstration that it is.
That is correct.
And that would be the engineering reports. Okay, and then the, I'm I'm still confused on the bluff zone. It sometimes there's places inland that don't, that are just up on a hill could be considered a bluff. Are they included in this? Or is it just when it's overlooking water?
Okay.
The D N R involvement.
Yeah, the definition of a bluff means that it has to be within the shoreline area. So it has to be within one thousand feet from a lake or three hundred feet from a river. And it has to be a certain distance in height in in elevation. And it has to be angled towards the the water body. There's there's a specific definition as to what a bluff is, what a bluff isn't. You're right in thinking if there's if there's a bluff or what somebody would call a bluff in an area of the county that there's no body of water that's involved in it and it slumps, you know, when a tree falls in the woods and no one's there, it doesn't make a sound. It's it's one of those things. It's like, it doesn't have quite the adverse impact as it would as if it is right there on the water body. And I see Joseph has his hand raised as well.
Okay, you've helped.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we're not banning structures from being on a bluff. We're just saying that they have to meet the bluff setback. The bluff setback is thirty feet from the top of the bluff. If a structure meets that, then it's moot as to whether it's on shallow soils or ledge rock or whatever. So what we're trying to do is to create a standard where we have a safety factor for buildings in an area where there is a bluff. And meeting that thirty foot setback from the top of the bluff, according to the D N R, does provide that safety factor.
Yeah, just a quick clarification. We're not creating this. So that standard is set already by the state. So it would just be going going back instead of allowing this blanket lesser restrictive deviation that we've allowed. It's going back to the statewide standard. For now.
Okay. Think we can move on, Tim.
Okay, so, um, okay. So then looking looking forward then at the sections, the old sections, what we have identified in in the strike language is section seven point seventeen and eighteen, the water supply and sewage treatment. That again goes back to that effect of deleting that, putting it into section five or article five under general provisions. And then also taking out the specific provisions and just referencing the ordinance, the septic ordinance and such for those provisions. That's what our provisions are. And so that's actually, well, you know what? Because we're we're on our own, this is the only real change in article eight. I will go ahead and and nine, put these both in there, that this is also the same thing, that we're we're basically eliminating the specific language looking for anything dealing with septic or water and and referencing just the Cook County Septic Ordinance as well. So those are the changes in article eight and nine. Seven, eight, and nine are all are all done unless you want to have more discussion.
Any any further discussion on those? Seven, eight, nine, okay.
Okay, well.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
All right, so moving on then to the the final article is article sixteen. And that's under under powers, looking at kind of this regular administration and enforcement here. Article sixteen is. So article or section six point zero two allows for clarifications regarding entry on property and waiving of certain after the fact fees. We're always trying to look for ways in which it's much more important for us and the county to be able to gain compliance than it is to collect after the fact fees. So we want to be able to be in a circumstance where if we can waive an after the fact fee, but but make sure that it's done in a way that we gain compliance sooner without having to take it before any kind of court or anything like that, then we're always looking for ways to be able to do that. So that's that's an addition into that. And then in number or item D, yeah, sixteen oh three, under permits, when permits are allowed or required, item D, it adds in three exemptions. And it's looking at, you know, right now, you're you're exempted if you put up an unsided woodshed or if you put up any accessory structure that's less than one hundred and sixty square feet in size. And so we kind of discussed internally and we've seen a lot of these particular issues out here and said, well, let's maybe add the exemptions to include these hoop type greenhouses or hoop storage things that are less than three hundred square feet. And then that's number four. Number five would be those boardwalks up to four feet wide. And then six is the stairwells, ramps and landings that are less than four feet width and thirty two square feet in size. And so those are just additions for exemptions of land use permit, but they would still have to meet, you know, any erosion control or other type measures if that's required.
Very good.
And then the last one is requiring.
A question on number six. Stairways, ramps, landings used for ingress egress from principal accessory structures provided not to exceed thirty two square feet? Should it say landing?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the landing, okay, four by eight. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
But the stairway, as long as it's four feet wide or less, it's fine.
That's correct.
It can be miles long.
And they are.
In a practical sense, and actually, the the ramps, if you look for them, most of them are done for handicap accessibility and things like that. Or, you know, just just ease of being able to walk up and down. Those are better options than it is digging into the ground and, you know, having the soil disturbance. Any of these stairwells or or boardwalks or walkways, even with the landings, are are far better in terms of soil and smoke stabilization than carving something into the ground.
Right.
Okay, so then the next thing, you look at items I, J and K. Let's here, and what this does is that adds in permit requirements. So if you have a hoop greenhouse in excess of three hundred square feet, so that's kind of that cutoff below three hundred square feet for hoop building, it's exempt above three hundred square feet. You would need a land use permit detached decks, which are decks that are freestanding in and of themselves in excess of thirty sixty four square feet in size would require a land use permit. And then the last one, which we we always have a lot of discussions over because there's, we see these more and more, are these freight semi trailers. And what we're saying here is freight semi trailers that are not licensed for road use, and if they're all over one hundred and sixty square feet in size, would require a land use permit to place.
Yeah.
And that that actually sums it all up. That's the the.
Tim, this is this is just in that kind of frame with the semi trailers. Does the county have any any thoughts about or or written down? I haven't seen it on more and more people are using shipping containers.
Yeah, containers, right. Yeah, we regard those as accessory structures.
Okay, and and they have the same, they have the same requirements?
Under, any any shipping, any shipping thing, and as we consider it an accessory structure, if it's one hundred and sixty square, if it's less than that, it's exempted, but they still have to meet the setback requirements. If it's above one hundred and sixty square feet, then it requires a land use permit and requires a the setback distances.
Okay. I I got a question, Tim, on E. Construction of a building or commencement of a use shall be substantially begun by December thirty first of the year following approval of the permit. So does that mean if I get a gravel permit in September and I don't start on it in that year, that I I have to get an extension? Or does that mean I have until December thirty first of the, so I have, do I got three months or four months, or do I have fifteen months?
Yeah, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, Christian Laboda. It it actually, what we've run into because of the short building cycle that that we always run into here is instead of going twelve months, which if somebody does get it in in March and it's a it's an early spring and they feel like they're going to be able to get going and they want to get moving, but then they're not able to, then their permit runs out and they have to get an extension by the following March. What we have discussed internally is it makes more sense to give people basically two two building cycles. Like you, what what we're saying here is if you get it in March, you're not able to complete it by winter time. You've got to December thirty first of that next year to be able to substantially begin it, not even have to complete it, but to substantially begin it so that we can measure the setback distances and make sure that everything's copacetic. And then that would count your your land use permit as being in effect. And I see Luke also has his hand up.
I think that's a nice, that's a good resolution, I think, so.
Yep.
Well, I I, that kind of bothers me too because it kind of eliminates the the owner built because they typically take a little long. Because they typically take a little longer. Than a year. And sometimes contractors, they say they're going to be building and then you're put off. Um, is there a fee for extending the permit?
And and actually, Commissioner Marchbacher, I'm I'm glad you kind of brought that issue up. And I I was trying to make that point a a little bit earlier, that in order to have the land use permit be. Considered to be in effect or uh, um, acted upon. It just has to be substantially begun. It doesn't have to be completed. So we do get a lot of owners. Um, that will start a project and then, yeah, it may take ten years for them to do it. We just want to make sure that it's begun enough so that we can measure out the setback distances and everything like that. Um, it, we have not been charging people to go ahead and extend uh, the permit, but if if. What this does is this actually expands everything from the current uh, time schedule that we have. So currently. If you get a land use permit and you do not act on that permit, uh, at least substantially begin the the construction. Within twelve months, you can extend that permit for another twelve months. And if you don't uh, substantially begin it within that next twelve months, and that extension is no fee. Then you have to get a new land use permit. So in this one, you can take from March. Of one year till December thirty first of the following year before you would need to get an extension. And then you get extension for a year. And then so if you don't begin it by that point, you'd have to get another land use permit. So basically, it takes what we already have in place. And it adds in more time to it, more allowances for people than it takes anything.
Do you think it?
Go ahead, go ahead, Judy.
Do you think it needs to defined as to what substantially, substantially complete means? Because what I think it means is maybe very different from what you think it means.
I think it's substantially begun.
It's begun, not be, yeah. It doesn't have to be completed, Judy, it's substantially begun, or a foundation. Is what I.
But. We all have a different idea what it means. You know, in my mind, it means dried in.
We've, we've talked about putting a a definition for that. Uh, you're you're right. I mean, we've we've been. Fairly generous on that. I I don't want to say generous, but we've been fairly loose in terms of accepting what it is. We. All we really want to do is be able to establish that it's going to meet its setback distances, that it's not going to be too close to the lake. And that it's not going to be uh, maybe over its height. We would love to see a a complete shell uh, put up. Um, that's what we would would love to see because then we would also be able to determine the height of the building. Uh, but we currently do not have a de- definition of substantially begun. Uh, but if it's the planning commission's uh, recommendation, I mean, we can certainly work on a definition.
My concern, my concern is. Down the road, the new guy coming. What his view of substantially begun means may be entirely different and it might be a nightmare. You know, affordable housing is a big problem in Cook County and every barrier put up. Creates, but I, you know, I understand and it, I think it could be defined what what it means. Be substantially complete.
Judy, um.
Mister Chair, can can I jump in here somewhere?
Yeah, Joe, go ahead, Joe. Yeah, let let Joe speak, please.
Yeah, I I've had my hand up here, so. Um, substantially begun, defined in section two point eight five. The progress in the construction of a building where the exterior walls and roof framing have been completed. So the structure setbacks and finished height can be accurately determined.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, I didn't, m- mister Chair, I um, I I I'd agree. I think that the 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 definition exists there and I. And I think that was alluded to earlier, went with the statement that it substantially completed means that you have. Enough of the structure in place, if you can make the measurements necessary to determine compliance. Uh, and 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 I don't think there's a lot of argument about that. Uh, you know, if if i- 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 if not enough of the structure there to measure, then you haven't substantially complied.
Right. If it's defined, I I'm, okay, I think it's fine. Everybody knows what it means going in.
I think that definition only applies to structures though, and I think this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is construction of a building or commencement commencement of a use. Shall be substantially begun, so commencement of a condition permit, which is necessarily a structure. So I don't know that you can define it much more.
Okay.
Yeah.
You could be skipping topsoil on a gravel pit and and that would be a beginning.
There, and 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 Mister Chair, this this is all, it it is very good discussion. It's it's, this is the same discussion that we have internally. And I I guess I have to correct myself and say, yeah, there there was a a definition for it. I forgot about that. Um, but on on the goods, good part is, there's there's a couple of elements that we we got to consider here. Almost everything. That we do, we want to have as many uh, objective standards that we that are certainly not up for interpretation as possible. But much of what we do has to be interpreted um, in 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 the light of the regulations and in the light of how much is completed. And how much isn't completed. And like I said, the intent is for us to be able to ensure that it's in the proper place and everything like that. And on the positive side, um, it's been this way for the last thirty some odd years and. You know, the world hasn't come to an end on this. And so, um, we have these discussions. And generally, what what ends up happening is is we uh, will grant an extension to a permit. Uh, and then if it if it goes much, much too long and it's at a place where we cannot determine what it is. Then they reapply for another permit and and we go from there and it's worked.
I might just go in there. My personal example, folks, a a few years ago when I was building and if this very thing came up, my concrete guy decided, uh. I'm not going to mention any names, I thought I'd go to Hawaii for the winter instead of finishing my job. I had to find somebody else quickly. Foundation. And they said, oh, that's great. You're good. That's that, you know, I didn't have any walls, I poured a foundation, you could measure it. And they did, and they were happy. So the staff has been, uh, I think staff treats people pretty fairly.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I I think that kind of picking up on what Judy said, I I like the uh, the new language. And I I agree with the idea that it's a little more flexible, particularly when you take into account. Some of the labor shortages that that Judy referred to and and the ability of. You know, you call, you call a plumber and they're, you know, well, I can't really even talk to you on the phone for six months. Um, I think there are some real labor shortages in Cook County and that. That ordinance now gives some flexibility that the owner's not going to be, you know, incredibly anxious about. How far we've come or how we, you know, how we proceed, so.
Okay, Tim, you're finished, you say? We were going through them all.
Yep, those are all. Mister Chair.
I think we, you know, we talked about it and we opened, we asked for public uh, uh, comments a couple of times. Then we talked about a bunch of things since we did that. Maybe it'd be good to open up again and see if we have any public that would like to comment on any of the zoning ordinance changes. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to make any comments? Hey, hearing none, we'll close that portion here again and uh, Commissioner? Uh, folks, uh, are we in agreement on this, or do we have other issues, the things we want to talk about or airing out before we move this?
Uh, I'm in agreement on everything we've talked about tonight. And before we are done for the night, I I do have another. Uh, couple ordinances I'd like to discuss.
Okay, other than these, Charlie, you're talking about.
Other than, other than these, so this stuff I'm good.
Okay, anyone else have questions or comments regarding the ordinance changes? Well, folks, would we like to move, someone like to uh, move this forward to the board?
I make a motion to the Planning Commission recommend these changes to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Marchbacher. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Commissioner Hineker has a second. Further get further discussion. Hearing none, I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Hineker.
Aye.
Commissioner Marchbacher.
Aye.
And I myself, Commissioner Labota.
Aye.
Commissioner Schlot.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Okay, I think we have finished the our ordinance business here, but Charlie, I said, he did want to bring something else up. Charlie, you want to, you want to go to that?
Yeah, which um, really what it, what it is, is I would like to um. Ask that at some point, we, some point in the near future, um, it's not something that comes up all that often, but uh. Address the the uh, ten point zero six special criterion requirements. Um, B and C, which have to do with uh, gravel pits. Um, I think there's some language that could be. Could be possibly cleaned up there. Um, might be something that might be in depth enough, might require. Um, looking into forming a committee to to uh, gather some information there. Um, but it's something that that I think would be important and could definitely be uh, a few issues cleaned up, so.
You're good, I see Tim taking notes there, so.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And 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 Mister Chair, I I, and just, I'm sure to to everybody's great joy. Um, this, this kind of volley in here with the uh, ordinance revisions, it's just kind of our our first shot in. Um, well, actually, it's not the first. We we had already did some of the other uh, zoning ordinance uh, and such. But there are other ordinances that we do want to take a look at. Um, subdivision ordinance is a big one. Want to look at at some of our other ones. I I I want to be able to get, by the end of this year, I want all of us to be comfortable. With all of our ordinances. And so uh, it's been a while since we've looked at these. Um, and Charlie, absolutely, if you want to, if you have uh, anything specific that you want to have, take look, uh, take a look at. Um, you know, feel free to to contact me and we can talk and get kind of a list of things. That that might be, and then we can decide whether it is that we want to establish some sort of specific committee. Or if it's something we can handle just on a planning commission level uh, or so, but. Um, suffice it to say, we we will be coming back with some more changes. I don't know if I'm going to request a another special. Uh, hearing or not, it was, it's really nice to be able to just focus on uh, the ordinance language. Uh, issues themselves instead of having to deal with some cases and then come back to an ordinance revision and then other cases. So I kind of like that special meeting thing, but I know, um, you know, we, I I respect everybody's time too.
Very good. Okay. Are we uh, ready to adjourn?
Move for adjournment.
I heard John, I recognize John's voice there. John has moved adjournment.
I'm late.
And uh, we we have a second to, and that was Jerry, he's quick with the seconds. So we got to call the roll to adjourn as well. Uh, Commissioner Hineker.
Aye.
Commissioner Marchbacher.
Aye.
And I myself, Charlie Labota.
Aye.
And John Schlot.
Aye.
And Chuck Anderson.
Hi.
Well, good, good evening, folks. We 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 got through this in the, what is it, ten hour and twenty minutes? That's not so bad.
Good job, Tim.
Yeah, very good.
Thanks to Joseph, he did a lot of work on this too.
Yeah, uh, staff does work in the background. I I didn't know that. I thought you did it all. Geez, we thought you did it all.
Thank the staff for their preparation and and the the presentation here. I think uh, you've done a. An outstanding job. There's very little uh, dissension from what you've done. And it's it's a commendable job. Uh, makes our task a lot easier. We can accomplish a lot in a fairly short time. And I think that we did accomplish a lot tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Yeah. All right, good night, folks.
Good night.
Good night.